Because I get one.
Yeah. Do we need to review Zoom procedures?
Uh, no, we don't. Uh, we do have to have Aaron introduce himself as parents online.
Hi, everybody. This is Aaron. I'm here. Sorry, I have, uh, I got my back to school sickness, so I figured I'd stay at home.
Thank you for not sharing.
Okay, um, would anyone like to move approval of the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
I'm.
Great. Um, comments from the chair. I did miss the last meeting, but I don't have any, I don't know if there's anything uh, that I should know from the last meeting. Yes, I'll just ask that in the space. But I assume you just went over zoning more.
Yeah, we just, we just reviewed the, it's a chapter one changes that we'd made, but we didn't move forward with chapter two or anything like that yet.
Um, and the, uh, thanks. It sounds like a bunch of you helped shepherd the approval of the region, by the Regional Planning Commission of the plan forward. So thanks to those who participated in that. Um, I don't have any other comments, so we can move to general business. Is there any comments from the public not about something not on the agenda?
Steve, whatever. The, uh, I s- I want to point to something that's not on the agenda regarding the CDBG grants. There was three million, I understand, reserved of that for planning, but the, uh, there's still nobody putting in a grant for planning for Country Club Road, and we're gonna need it. So in addition to, especially in that the Recovery and Resilience Commission made a point of advising in the city plan that we should look for higher ground places that could serve in a disaster, uh, as a outpost, uh, command center, place for vehicles, place for shelter, supplies pre-stocked, et cetera. That's a whole dimension of the plan that's missing, and Country Club Road's gonna need a master plan. You're not gonna get financing or TIF or anything, and, and you're not gonna, without a traffic study. The Regional Commission's approval of the plan has been appealed. Uh, there's under section forty-four seventy-six of twenty-four VSA. Uh, unfortunately, the legislature, in their infinite wisdom, uh, fifteen years ago repealed the Council of Regional Commissions. And forty-four seventy-six is still on the books saying, I, and I had twenty-four petitioners, among them the governor's attorney. So I gathered the necessary signatures to get an appeal in. Uh, ACCD has declined to appoint the regional review panel in the absence of the Council of Regional Commissions. So I've filed a, uh, what's it called? Petition for declaratory judgment in writ of mandamus today, so that the court will order ACCD to appoint a, uh, review panel. But the review panel cannot be from around here. They have to be disinterested, regional commissioners or staffers from outside of this region with no political or financial interest in our plan. And they will do the work that y'all were supposed to do. Read the statute carefully, look at our plan, and see whether they meet, meet up. So it would be smart to, for us to be applying for some of the planning money, CDG, BGDR, or regular C, CBDG. Alphabets, soon. But we should be planning to get a master plan done that's gonna integrate the recreation with the housing, that's gonna match the traffic capacity of that road. Uh, to Wednesday night, the city council's seeing the results of the VHB work, proposing to spend five million dollars to raise Route Two up to more closely with, match the railroad, uh, in order to allow more traffic to get on. More traffic, or at least make it a legal intersection. It's not legal for any traffic with the unlevel distance that close to Route Two because of the railroad. But it's very irresponsible, reckless even, to be spending, proposing to spend five million where a rotary might be required or signal, whatever, uh, based on a traffic study, based on a housing build out, based on a master plan that we haven't even acknowledged that we need. So you're not gonna blend a walkable village with housing and retail and light industry and recreation and potential homeless, uh, services without a master plan. And that's probably gonna be what takes down the city plan and sends you all back to the drawing board on that with the whole adoption process spanning into the end of next year. Uh, so that's a heads up of where you're at and why, how I'm having to do extraordinary measures because you didn't listen before.
Hey, uh, anyone else want to speak? Okay. All right, um, update on planning projects in the city, Mike?
All right, so, uh, as was mentioned, we did get the, the regional approval of the city plan. Uh, and we're all, we're gonna, we'll see what happens with whatever appeals. Get in again, every, at every junction, there've been arguments this doesn't meet, and at every junction, it passes that it does meet. So we will see what happens. Uh, if we, I'd love to have a third-party review, have another, have another group come through and review and say it does meet regional again, and I'm sure Steve will have some excuse why that doesn't go through, but we'll see how that goes. Um, CDBGDR pre-applications that we discussed, we did, um, get four of the five pre-applications. Um, were authorized, green-lighted to go through to full applications. The one that was not approved was the one for Country Club Road. Because to put in infrastructure for housing, you have to have the developer on board to do that. So, um, we met in August with city council, I met with council, or, uh, the city council in August. And we're shifting gears on how we're doing that process now, so we're gonna try to get a developer on board. So that way, that would make us eligible for the February application cycle. So that's our goal at this point is to, um, the state wants to fund that project. And so we're gonna try to go and get that, um, process. So, uh, Whitenburg will be at the next meeting on this Wednesday to go and start prepping the council for that.
Is there more of that money available? Are they doing multiple bites of that?
They, they have a hundred and sixty million for the eighty, sixty, eighty million that they have available. But, um, they anticipate a lot of projects, in particular housing projects, maybe in the exact same boat that we are. In other words, they may have a developer, but they don't have the plans. Um, in this case, you know, we're trying to line up all the pieces and, um, to take advantage of these, uh, to take advantage of the funds. So they said, don't give up. They actually encouraged us, said, yeah, go forward, see if you can get the developers, see if you'd be able, uh, get, get the timing right to put that information in, um, put those applications in. If not, we're also preparing Northern Borders Grant. Um, we've got a pre-application in on that to see if that grant, that's a, that's a smaller grant and requires a match. So we're, we're putting the applications in to see which ones will go. On the.
Before we move away from that, can I just ask about, so, so is there gonna, are they using the concept? Cause I know the city council had like a subcommittee and they came back and kind of redrew what they're thinking. Are you putting that like an RFP out for?
We're gonna put an RFP out to a developer.
Okay, what's the timeline?
Uh, well, the hope is that we, it, it's really depends on, and that's what the Wednesday meeting is all about, is, is how much process we want. We could very quickly get a, a RFP process out for six or eight weeks to start. You know, is it gonna be a one round, is it gonna be two rounds? Sometimes you'll do a two-round process, you'll go through and say, if you're interested in being the developer, get us some ideas, and then we'll select one or two, because it could, the final selection could take, um, would require more investment. And sometimes, you know, you wanna go through a pre-application process, narrow it down to a handful, and then have them go through and come up with more detailed proposals of, of how they would meet those requirements. And the funds we were asking for was, uh, it's, we were asking for about ten million dollars for the one that didn't get approved. Uh, for the infrastructure, it costs about five million, so there'd be some money left over um, to help subsidize the affordable housing project, um, or the units, which would be between twenty and forty units of the, of the two hundred. And the infrastructure that's going out there, so yes, it's a five million dollar price tag, but it's not five million dollars to elevate Route Two. It's five million dollars to install water lines, sewer lines, starting at the roundabout under the river, Jack and Boar under the river. Run those out to the Country Club Road intersection, elevate the Country Club Road intersection, so that way it better matches the railroad. Then extending those sets of utilities up to the, the Country Club Building, including fully reconstructing the road itself. The road is between, uh, twelve and fourteen percent, kind of, it's not even. So we would lower it and even it all up to a twelve percent grade. Well, one of the proposals is, we could lower it to a ten percent. We don't think that's necessary. DPW doesn't think that's necessary. The twelve percent, um, would help to alleviate some of the steepness of the road. It would make it better. We would also be adding a sidewalk. We would also be adding curbs. We also would be adding in stormwater. And the intersection would be prepped if we wanted to put in a turn signal. If there was a need for signalization in the future, the intersection is prepped for such a thing. So it's not five million dollars to elevate Route Two. It, five million dollars for an entire.
Part of it actually had some reconstruction of, of housing at the, like, the old Country Club building? Like where we had our, our outreach meetings and stuff? Is there something in that phase, or is it just the road?
This, this five million is just for that phase, but to get eligibility for that five million, we have to have a housing project associated.
Which is the?
If we can get the developer to come on board and say, here's what we would propose, and we can get these constructed before twenty thirty, we would have a requirement to build at least twenty, uh, LMI housing units before twenty thirty.
And that's, that's that site where the existing building is.
It would be any, it could be anywhere on that site. Um, it could be, you know, we're, we're looking to, for a developer to propose. And my recommendation, again, this is to council to figure out what we're going through. We could put an RFP out for the entire thirty acres of open space. My, my recommendation to council is that we just put out the RFP for that lower flat area. It's about ten acres. Um, and to see how someone would develop that area, how many units would they fit in? Those types of, answer those types of questions.
How big is the whole thing?
The whole parcel? The whole parcel is a hundred and thirty-five acres, but a hundred of it is woods. And almost everything that's woods is pretty close to unbuildable. It's pretty steep.
Thirty-five acres, it's buildable.
Yes, thirty-five acres, that's.
Ten of it.
Yep, and, but, yeah, about ten, ten of it's down on the flat area. So, and about ten of it's been reserved, ten to fifteen has been reserved for recreation.
So the process is the city council has to vote that out, that they're gonna go down that road, and then you're, then you just put it out, and the goal is to have bids back by?
Uh, yeah, it would be sometime in the fall. I mean, it, and it also depends how much, and this is what David White from Whitenburg is gonna talk to council about. How much, how much does council want to get into the, the actual, how do I put it, the, um, the RFP, the proposal? You can pretty much leave it open, or you could go in and say, we expect, you know, all proposals shall have net zero buildings and be whatever.
So that'll be in the next few city council meetings.
Yeah, it would be in the next. The first meeting is just this one to try to lay out things and say, hey, what would you guys like? Cause if you want just a basic open process, David White could put together an RFP, get it back to council relatively quick. If we wanna have more conversation of what requirements do we want? Do we wanna say no single-family homes? Or do we wanna say only single-family homes? Whatever those are, you can come in and, uh, and make those recommendations.
Okay.
Thanks. So that's most of the update on the, um, for the projects, we do have, um, Matthew is on board in my office. So after three months of being short-staffed, it's really great to have his help, um, but getting, we gotta get him up to speed. Um, but other than, other than that, you know, he's kind of jumping in with both feet to get these grants in by the end of the month. We do have a grant writer for two of them, two, two of the CDBGDRs, but Matthew and I have to write the other two, so. That would be.
What are the other four applications?
So, oh, yes. So the other four applications that did get approved. Um, so those four are, um, one that John has been closely working with, uh, the Pioneer Dam and Home Farm Way property. So we're gonna remove the dam, and Home Farm Way is gonna be, they're removing the building now. They're gonna eventually go in and remove a bunch of fill to make that area a better floodplain. Uh, that project was already approved, is already approved by the HMGP Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, federal government. So we already had an eighty-twenty, eighty percent covered by the feds, twenty percent covered by the state. And the state asked us to apply for DR funds because we can match DR funds. And that would free them up to use their money for other projects around the state. So it's a project that is happening. It's just kind of a little shell game behind the scenes. Um, but that's one application. Uh, the second one is to remove the Bailey Dam next to Shaw's. Um, that's one that my office will be working on. The third one is, uh, three culverts on Elm Street, starting, the closest one is at, um, Stump Dump, uh, Finch Road, uh, right after the Nature Center, there's a culvert. And all three of these culverts are basically half the size that they, that they should be. So that's one. Then as you go out Elm Street, there are two more before you get to Wrightsville Dam that need to get fixed. So all three of those would be a second application, would be our third application. Um, and then the last application will also be written by our consultants that we hired. And that is mitigation of the Water Resource Recovery Facility, the sewer plant. So, um, the reason why the sewer plant hasn't flooded the past couple of floods is that the road itself acts as a levee, and it is actually one inch below the hundred-year floodplain. And that's really, really risky, cause if the water goes over that road, it will fill in to about depth of about eleven feet deep in the sewer plant. So that would be catastrophic. The second issue is water coming in through the outpipes. So the effluent pipe, we need, we need to have a bypass system. So that way, if water reaches a certain level, we can just shut off the, the sewer plant. Because we have CSOs, that lets floodwaters in, into the in-pipes and basically just washes out the system. So we have to be able to turn the in-pipes off. We already have backflow preventers on the outpipes, but we need to turn off the in-pipe. So between those two, that's about a three million dollar project to elevate Dog River Road, bring it up a couple more feet, and put a berm on the one side to keep floodwaters away from the plant. And then there'd be a gate where, um, that they could close for, uh, where the entrances are to the garage and to the sewer plant. So it's a, a highly, um, high priority project. The state considers it a high priority project. So we feel good about those two applications, the Pioneer Street and the Water Resource Recovery Facility. We feel pretty good about those, um, and we tagged our professional writers for those. The other two need a little bit more work. We're working with John's group and the River Conservancy to get some additional help on how, on support for the Bailey Dam project. Um, which we think also would, would benefit. And, and because of the removal of the dam upstream, it would really be a double benefit if we could get that lower dam removed as well. So, um, so yeah, that's, uh, those are the, the four applications. They're all due at the end of the month, so we're pretty, pretty busy.
I have a question about, um, going back to the city plan. Are there any other administrative steps that need to be, that need to be taken before it is the official city plan?
Uh, it's already the official city plan. Yep, yep, there's no, no step that is regionally approved. And if, they're all approved and regionally approved unless and until a judge says so.
Okay.
So.
Um, on the RFP, what is the thought process behind going, just planning out the ten acres versus, it sounds like there's twenty to twenty-five acres that could be planned out? What is the?
It would, it would end up with a single, there's a road, so you're gonna have a road that comes up, and then there's an area, and then there's an area, a place where a road goes up to these upper areas. So it's, it's a distinct area, so we could bid the whole thing. Or we could just go through and say, let's talk about, you know, let's not bite off more than we can chew. Let's, let's take this bottom part. If we get projects developed down here, then we're generating income into the chip. That's what we need is to apply for a chip, um, which is just like a TIF, except it's a project-based and you need a developer. So we need a developer for the grant application, we need a developer for chip. If we're shifting gears from TIF to chip, and that's what city council has said we wanna do, then we need a developer. And so there's two reasons for us to get a developer on board. And the developer would come up with the, the plans and what they're gonna build and how much increment that would generate. So then we could go through and say, okay, well, now, now we can start planning for phase two in the upper area because we know how much money we have for infrastructure. Because if we don't get enough money in the lower area, then we're not gonna have the revenues to extend the roads and extend the sewer up the hill.
Okay, so the two areas are geographically distinct, is that what?
Yeah, yeah, if, yeah, if you're out on the golf course, it's kind of, you get up to the Country Club, it's kind of flattish, and then you kind of watch it go uphill to these other fairways, and it's those upper areas that are kind of in phase two.
Okay. And then there's the Northern Burgers Borders Grant Pre-Application, is that?
Yeah, that's, so that's just another grant that's been out. A number of, uh, communities have tried to, to get access to that. It's only for the states of Vermont, New Hampshire, and Maine. Um, we've kind of held off on putting in an application for this, waiting for the right opportunity. You can get between one and three million for infrastructure. Probably more likely it'll be one million, we're gonna put in for three. They can always tell us no and give us one. But it's better to put in and see where that goes, and that, that gets you some funding and gets you somewhat moving in the right direction. Um, and that would really act either to supplement the DR funds if we got both, or if we had to go at some point to a bond to build something out, then it would offset any bond that we would be using.
Which infrastructure projects would it go to?
It's going towards the, the pipes and the road that we were talking about, the five million dollars, the Country Club Road, yeah.
Great, um, so let's move on to number six, if nobody has any other questions.
And we'll have John come up for number six. So I guess I can just kick this off really quick. Um, so every year, those of you who've been here a couple of years, every year, the Municipal Planning Grant Program, there's an annual cycle to go and apply for grant funds. We have applied for, uh, updating our zoning, updating our city plan. I think most recently, we had one to pay, help DPW do their pilot study on the road surface mapping. So they could do the, um, yeah, the LiDAR mapping, which gives you the pavement condition index, the PCI. So we can have a consistent measure, rather than having people walk it and make evaluations. Let a computer use AI to make those calls, so that way it's consistent. So, um, so yeah, we've used these grants. So yeah, we've used these grants for a lot. This year, we don't have a project in, in the loop. So John asked, because the Commission on Recovery and Resilience has been interested in doing a riverfront master plan. He said that if we aren't doing it, he'd like to put in a grant for it. And I'll let him explain the.
Thanks so much, Mike. And so I'm John Copans. I'm the Executive Director of the Montpelier Commission for Recovery and Resilience. Really appreciate the chance to join you to talk about this tonight. As folks remember, we had a series of big public forums as we were reflecting on the floods of 2023 and really thinking about what comes next for our city. The commission as an organization came out of those forums and a set of priorities for the community came, came out of those forums as well. And our sort of three categories of work as we think about what we've been up to as a commission sort of span the scale from really thinking about the watershed as a whole. And you know, for Montpelier's not an island, we, our, our fate is really determined upstream of us when we think about all the water that falls in the watershed and then flows through, through Montpelier. So we, we think about the watershed scale. We then also very much think about sort of the downtown scale. Ultimately, we have a downtown that's vulnerable, given where it's located. We, we experienced that intensely in 2023. And so how do we make this downtown more adaptive to future, to future floods? And then finally, we've done work around emergency preparedness and response as well. And what we're talking about today is, is what we've conceived of as something called the Rivers Edge Master Plan, which is really to look at our river's edge as it flows through Montpelier. That's both the north branch and the, the main branch of the Nuski. And, and really sort of re-envisioning what our relationship is to those, to those two waterways. We think, and in fact, I'll remind you, this is one of your strategies incorporated in the city plan was to do this Rivers Edge Master Plan. Appreciation for you all for incorporating, incorporating that into the city plan. But the long and short of it is, we feel like the timing is right to really engage the community in this conversation about how we're interfacing with our rivers. You know, an example of the types of decisions we have to make, as you all probably know, when, when we experienced the 2023 flood, certain households are eligible for a buyout as part of that process. That's a, ultimately, that's a municipal decision about which parcels you want to approve for a buyout and which parcels maybe are not as suitable for buyouts. It is better to have those conversations and really think sort of strategically and, and geographically about those questions around buyouts before the next flood happens. It's a much tougher conversation to have when you've got people who've suffered really traumatic losses in their household and are, for obvious reasons, really interested in the potential financial solution that's a buyout. But it's a different question for a municipality in terms of what parcels are really appropriate and provide some real public good for, for buying out. Because ultimately, those are parcels that we'll never see development in the future. And so that's the sort of question that a Rivers Edge Master Plan would explore. It would also think about, you know, we, we've talked about a couple of dam removals. We, we have bridges that are real points of constraint for us along the river. We think about how we develop along the river. You know, big, big news this week about the changing of hands of the RK Miles property, right? The Hunger Mountain Co-op. And already some conversation about, wow, what do we do with that property? Obviously, it's theirs and they'll make some decisions about that. But it's also worthwhile for us, every time we're thinking about that river's edge, to be thinking about where are there, what are the public interests when it comes to allowing the, the water to spread out and to slow down in a way that doesn't inflict the same kind of damage on our downtown? So that's the long and short of it. We, we as a commission are, are excited to work in partnership with the city on this. Ultimately, because it's a municipal planning grant, the city is the applicant, but we're willing and eager, in fact, to do a fair amount of the work in the background. The cap for municipal planning grants is around thirty thousand dollars for individual municipalities. This is probably going to cost more than that. So another piece of work for us is to find some additional funds for that. That's something that the commission will, will be working on as well. But we're, we're very much excited to partner with you as a planning commission on this and with your planning director and, and staff to, to take this on. So I think, yeah, happy to answer any questions.
What is the thirty million dollars? Like, what are some of the things that that would be helping with? Oh, three, thirty thousand. Okay, thirty, okay, thirty thousand. I'm like, what? Yeah, what?
Yeah, that's one hell of a plan.
Yeah. Ultimately, it's about really hiring in some expertise, some consultants who are, I mean, just to some degree, like you had with the city plan, folks who can really provide the expertise to do that planning work. I mean, one component we'd want to think about is public engagement because that is any, for, as you all know, any planning exercise, public engagement is really critical, really making sure the whole community feels like they've had the opportunity to participate. But also, in particular stakeholder groups are going to be, I would say, particularly important for this process. So that's one of the pieces we'll, we'll have to figure out is how much of that public engagement happens. You know, the commission has, has done some work around public engagement. So we can be a partner in some of that. But sometimes you also bring in some of that expertise to do that work as well.
Okay.
I, you know, I, I commend you for, you guys have been doing a lot of work for a number of years. So thanks for the good work. I, I, I'm glad that we're doing this. I, I feel like thirty thousand dollars doesn't go very far when you're thinking about, you know, big engineering questions. And there's also other communities around, as you kind of talk about, right? Like upstream, downstream. So any of the, like, do you have any sense of how much it would really, to, to really do what you, we all know needs to be done? How much that really would cost?
I mean, ultimately, well, the grant's capped at thirty thousand. I think we think it's probably twice that and more, like seventy or eighty thousand to do. But, but what we're talking about is a Montpelier specific project.
Yeah.
I mean, we have been doing a fair amount of work at the watershed scale as well because you really can't do this in an, in an isolated way. And in fact, Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission is taking the lead on another CDB GDR application, which is regional in scope, that would include some modeling of the river, the Upper Wenuwski watershed and some public engagement across the municipalities that make up the Upper Wenuwski watershed.
Those could marry into that somewhat.
Yeah, I think they do. Because you certainly need modeling as, as part of what informs decisions. I mean, a perfect example of that is for Five Home Farm Way and the Pioneer Dam removal. Like ultimately, it was modeling that showed that it was really the dam removal when coupled with the floodplain restoration at Five Home Farm Way, where there's real benefit, right? It, that, when you remove the dam, it really added to the benefit of that floodplain restoration. And without a good model, that, we wouldn't have known that. And so I don't want to over promise in that this consultant that we're paying seventy to eighty thousand, they are not doing in-depth sort of hydraulic and hydrologic modeling for, but, but there are some other sort of resources when it comes to those, those types of models.
Yeah, thanks.
This is just a general interest curiosity question. Are there other Rivers Edge Master Plans out there that you all are looking at and, or have discovered?
There is actually an organization that's national called the Waterfront Alliance. And they have published a guidebook, and I'm going to look it so I get it right, the Waterfront Edge Design Guidelines, WEDG. And that, Greg Gosens has been on the commission. He's actually just come off the commission. But Greg pointed us towards that as a really excellent resource and will be a real tool for us and the consultant that we hire in doing this. So there's examples where those guidelines have been applied, not here in Vermont, but in other places. You see it some in New York about what, and like, there's other communities that have really figured out how to interface. You know, my, my mom grew up in Greenville, South Carolina. That's a poster child as a community that really figured out how to interface with their river in a way that made it into an asset as opposed to just sort of this forgotten thing on, on the side of town. I, I grew up in Brattleboro that also really suffers from that, right? The Connecticut River is right there, but you just don't even know it when, when you're in town. I think we have that similar sort of challenge, but also an opportunity. So.
So is the master plan more about preparing for flooding or like in terms of buyouts and thinking about that? Or is it design and incorporating the river into our town? I guess I'm getting confused about the, the overarching goal of the master plan.
I think honestly, when we think about our rivers, we should be thinking about all, all of those pieces. I, I, I mean, certainly flood resilience is prominent. That's why I'm here. But the reality is, it's a, an economic resource, it's a recreation resource. And I think it would be a mistake to say it's only about one of those things. I think, to me, that's part of how, how we sort of scope this out and how we talk to the community about it. It's, you know, what do you think about when you think about your rivers? Why do you care about your rivers? Or why are you concerned about your rivers? I, I, I think it would probably be a mistake to categorize it too tightly as a flood resilience exercise. I think it needs to be, to be more holistic.
Yeah, I guess I would just go and mention that we, we actually had an old Rivers Edge Master Plan back in the nineteen nineties from Montpelier. And it was part of that planning process that helped create the bike path. How can we get more interactions? That's why the bike path is where it is. It's located in, in and along over the river with bridges. And so that was one of the outcomes of the, of that plan that Greg was on back in the nineties. And the other thing, just to keep in mind, the other comment you had with you, you know, the master plan and who's doing these, usually when we use the word master plan, this is why we stopped calling our city plan the master plan. Is because really it's a term of art that a lot of landscape architects and planners use. So what, who you end up hiring for a project like this is probably going to be a team of landscape architects. They'll probably have some specialists on staff who are hydrologists. But you're usually trying to look at the space a little bit with more of a landscape architect's eye. How can we, you know, what does this have to look like to get people to, to actually get to the river's edge? What do we have to do to the river's edge? How do we ensure the protection of the natural resources that are there? You know, we don't want to obviously go and fill in a whole bunch of endangered wetlands or something in order to get access. But at the same time, how can we make that interaction? Where are the benefits? And so that's what they'll look at is you're going to have some very urban stretches and you're going to have some rural stretches. And how do we balance those? And I think that's what the architects and the planners, landscape architects would all work together to try to define that or help, basically help the community talk about how we, how we want that to look. And then the question then comes up, okay, how do we make this happen? Because some of this is private property, some of this is public property. Obviously, it's a lot easier for us to look at the state parking lots and say, hey, this is what we should be doing. It's publicly owned. We've got a lot easier chance of making things happen. It's the private property where you're like, okay, how do we, you know, do the garage building on Elm Street behind Julio's? That's private property. So we're going to have to work with a property owner to figure out how we would, what would we envision for that space? And we have to understand when we're envisioning that space, we're envisioning somebody else's property and they may not be interested in advancing what projects we have. So we have to kind of talk through those potential issues.
I mean, that makes sense. I'll just say that I think that there's a ton of opportunity in, in Montpelier. I mean, the stretch of, of, of state-owned buildings and parking lots, it goes for a ways. Our high school is along there and then further down, you have more state properties. And then there is opportunity also with, with private. I, I remember when Bar Hill first came up and their, their initial plans had river access for kayak entry and, and things like that. Confluence Park has been talked about forever. So there's, there's like, there is so much opportunity for both access recreation and flood resilience. So, yeah, I think this is a great process.
Even that we're, we're moving these dams too, it's kind of like kayak access. And I feel like this river could be an economic driver for our city. And we're currently just like ignoring it and also kind of scared of it. Or it should be the opposite, like we should celebrate it. So I would, I would love to see a master plan.
Do we just need to endorse this, Mike? What's, what does it mean?
A motion to so officially municipal plan recommends applying for this. So I guess we would just need a motion to recommend applying for.
So I, I move that we recommend applying for this municipal, what's it called? Municipal planning grant for the Rivers Edge, Rivers Edge Master Plan.
There we go.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, okay. Come up and comment.
There's public participation and then there's public participation, as you well know. Some of it is checking a box and other is listening and hearing and adapting the plan to match. I like the phrase that there's so much opportunity, but then our history is rife with missed opportunities. You know, we built a bike path, but we didn't connect it to the parking lot right below to keep it walkable. So we got ninety-year-old ladies trying to drag their groceries up the gravel, eroded gravel between the Capital Plaza parking lot and the bike path. And then similar, you know, six-foot drop to the, to the Haney Lot, which is the one that goes out by Julio's. So there was, I, I FOIA'd the records request, there was a, a ramp following that round wall that was designed and it just disappeared from the design. And there's no public records at all of why or who disappeared it from the design. But it was in our plan to keep the place walkable, you know? And yet, missed opportunity, I guess. So let's not tout the opportunities unless we're prepared to follow through on them. But with regard to the council, the Commission on Recovery and Resilience, you, you, you need to condition your support for it on a level of transparency. That, that organization operates, their meetings behind closed doors, no public minutes, no public records. And we cannot bless and condone planning of public waterways and public waterfronts behind closed doors. So that's something I would, I've mentioned it to council, but it would be smart for you. You're, you're responsible for engaging the public in planning. So you can't, you know, say, sure, take this and go run with it. Our emergency maple plan was contracted for behind closed doors. No eyes on the scope of work, no eyes on the shortcomings of it, et cetera. So until we reform or litigate, until the Commission on Recovery and Resilience was created with the city. And yet it believes that it's exempt from public records and open meeting laws. So I would say that if you're going to support this, condition it upon that transparency.
So my question then is, yeah. This plan, this Rivers Edge plan, do you plan to just take it straight to city council after you've created it? Or is it going to come to us?
Ultimately, it's actually under, the city is the applicant for this. So it's actually a little different from the emergency plan in that the city is the applicant, the city would be the recipient. And so we're eager to partner, we're eager to partner in public engagement and support. But ultimately, given that the city is the applicant and really the host for this project, that it would, I think, ultimately probably come before you as a planning commission. I'm not sure about whether it would come before the council as well. Do you have a sense of that?
Usually, usually we'll present them to the commission and to the, to the, to the city council for either acceptance or approval. Because we've got to be able to close out those grants. So usually that's a part of the, the work plan.
And there are, there are surveillance requirements because it's lock ground money, right? So the state's getting updates and.
For, this is, this is state money, not federal money.
Right. So, but you have to work with ACCD.
Yeah, yeah. And their progress reports.
Right.
And procurement too.
Right.
To hire vendors.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm just saying, there's other checks and balances.
Yeah, and there'll be, there, there will be, this, once it gets through the, the planning commission, it's going to have to go to city council for approval with the resolution. And at that time, they'll be, they'll have probably developed much more of the, the work plan and budget. The work plan and budget that would be going alongside this, so we would see what is included in the work plan.
Okay, Aaron would like to chime in.
Yeah, just a quick question about the kind of the mechanics of the grant, does the grant have a term? In other words, do we have to? If this green is secured, does the money have to be spent within, say, a year or something like that? I'm just thinking of a situation where, say. John has to get fifty thousand dollars to do a retainer for this group to get the work started. And the grant is secured, does that start some sort of a clock so that, you know, that? So the John's required to kind of secure twenty thousand dollars additional to get that into motion or? Once the grant's secured, it's just there available for them when they. Get whatever money they need to to get them the work started.
So, yeah, it'll be about, it's the the grants are eighteen months, usually they go till about May of next of. Twenty seven, so if it gets approved. And I think they'll probably have to have some amount of funding secured. At in some capacity or very likely. These are very competitive, so I think that'll be part of the challenge, so if they if they don't have the additional funding, that will probably. That would probably cost them if they don't have some some very direct line that's like, we may not have the money, but. We know exactly where it's gonna be coming from in order to feel for ACCD to feel confident about awarding it. Because there's just not enough time to to spend seven months looking for funding and then. Do an RFP and get somebody on board and do an entire public process, because most of this grant will be public process, I mean, you're gonna have. You know, it's all about. Coming up with alternative, you know, understanding the issues. And you understand those by having public sessions, you know, it's very similar to what John's been doing all along, you you communicate to understand the issues. You go back to communicate to understand what the alternatives are and in what direction the public would like, you know, now that we know. This is the issue, there are three possible solutions, which solution would you like? And then. Then in in a rivers edge master plan like this, you probably are gonna have. Five, six, seven different zones, and it's like, well, what's gonna be our goal for this urban area on the north branch? Which is very different than the urban area on the Winuski and then the more rural areas on the Winuski.
They also, they if they're having trouble executing, they can apply for extensions also after they've been granted.
Not for these, the MPG's, they they are very. Hard and fast on those, boom, that's it, so. Other grants you can get that, these guys are very. Very punctual on making sure everything is done on time.
So it's the city is ultimately the applicant, is that kind of where this partnership comes in, where you are? Trying to secure this additional funding then, like that's.
That's certainly a piece of it, yeah, that we're we're already. Thinking about where those other other funds have come from, absolutely.
Well, we still have the motion and second on the table.
Oh, we didn't approve that? I thought we approved it. Oh, okay, do we need, okay. Do we need to?
Guess I would clarify, just have them revote now.
Okay, all right. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Uh, thank you so much, look forward to working with you all.
Thanks, John, I'll be in touch about getting you. Into the system.
Sounds good.
Thank you, John. Don't let me forget Ariana, I'll have to have you sign that.
Oh, okay.
So.
Oh, yeah.
Before we go.
Before I go, okay, number seven, is that Meredith gonna?
Uh, I'll, nope, I'll be running it.
Oh, okay, sorry, I I, okay.
All right, if everybody, yeah, if everyone doesn't know Meredith, Meredith Crandall, she's our zoning administrator. And. I'm gonna just. Share my screen, I think this will be the.
Easier way to look at this. We look kind of bluey.
Somebody. Adjusted the.
Yeah.
Can you look at the?
Let me see if I can check the settings.
Do you have to stand on the table?
Or is it, actually, is it more in, it looks like it might actually be in low res.
Yeah.
That's not unfocused, it's low res. It's good online.
Yeah, it's great online.
Does that mean that the people viewing on Zoom can see it clearly?
Yeah.
Okay.
I want user.
Maybe slightly better.
Nope, we might not be able to use the screen then.
Great, I know that's. Or maybe just so we move from your computer. It's maybe.
It's, I think, I think for some reason it's one of them, whether it's the laptop. That's projecting it. Has it set for low resolution?
It's not the laptop, it's that. The laptop here seems fine.
Okay.
Can you make the text spread out to the whole go full screen?
Yeah, but I'm I'm up here this close, I can tell you, it's just it's just pixels. Okay. So they'll just be big pixels. But.
Yeah, I'm trying, but I don't think that's the issue.
But.
Yeah, it's the pixels up there, right, it's the projector.
All right, well, I can, I'll let. Meredith try to go and work on it a little bit and I'll start just kind of going through, so what we've been doing. For all of the. The the parts that we've been working on. Is to kind of go through and have a conversation about what is in the existing plan. Or existing zoning and what is it that we've heard and we think that we might want to look at making changes? So we really aren't making changes today, we're kind of really highlighting, I think this is an area for us to look at. So we can start putting ideas together, putting talking points, discussions together. But a lot of people weren't here when we wrote the zoning regulations, so it's helpful to kind of go through and have. A little bit of a presentation of what's actually in the zoning and why it's there. So, part two. Which is. For anyone who is online, you can, you'll be able to see it, but. Section. It starts out really with section of two zero zero one, which talks about establishing base zoning districts and neighborhoods. So in any zoning bylaws, you're gonna break your community into various districts and. They're divided up really based on their character, their uses, and so how can we make one area? Treat one area different than the other, you wouldn't want to be treating. College Street the same way that you would treat Main Street, so you create it as a separate district. And how many and how few districts depend on how how much variety you have in your community and. You know, we've got a lot of districts here and I think there are some opportunities to collapse some of these. And in other cases, I think it's helpful to keep them, and then there's also a related question of, okay, well, maybe. The districts are good, but the lines are not necessarily in the right place and we need to move this line down another intersection. To make sure that we're capturing more parcels in in the certain zoning district, so the establishment. Is just establishing those districts and establishing the the neighborhoods. And then in two zero zero two, we established the overlay district, so we only have one. But the rules talk about it as as if there there were more because we could always add more if we wanted to, but the only overlay district we have. Is the design control overlay district. And then we have a few legal things to go through the creation of the official map and the zoning district boundaries, so. The zoning district boundaries in two zero zero four really are things that Meredith needs to have legal justifications, so. It goes through and says, if you're looking at boundaries. If it looks like it follows a street or a railroad line or a right of way, then it does. If it looks like it's following a parcel line, then it does, so if for some reason you zoom in on something. And the last four feet of your property are actually in a different zoning district, they're not, we would interpret it as. The map looks like it's following the parcel line, therefore it does follow the parcel line, or if your parcel line, you re you. Re survey your property line and it's actually two or three feet farther. The zoning district moves those two or three feet. You don't get to have a separate zoning district in the back part of your property. And again, anything if it's following natural features, it follows the natural features and we just have these in here as the legal basis for. How we interpret those zoning maps. When we get to chapter two ten, that's when we actually get into the zoning districts. And each one of them is labeled twenty one oh one, twenty one oh two on through, and they all follow the same. Format, there's a purpose statement, which is non regulatory, it simply describes and outlines what the intent is for. That district and some neighborhood characters. So. Urban center in this case has is consisted of three different neighborhoods. And I can pull up the the map. As well, if we wanted to, there is the urban center, sorry, I should have been scrolling my screen a little bit to keep you guys up, so. We have three, we've got civic, which encompasses the area that's the capital district over where the state house is, that's. Part of urban center one, the downtown business district is also, which is most of where we are right now. Main Street, State Street, those areas are in the downtown business and Elm Street is treated treated a little bit different. I don't, I think we would all agree that Elm Street by the character, it's kind of a separate, its own separate neighborhood. Where those. Larger buildings, the Rocky Cliff, it's it kind of defines a slightly separate, slightly distinct neighborhood character. Each zoning district, and we'll talk about this separately, figure two fifteen, that is a. That is the table of uses, so when we will get to that. Later on, and that just goes through and says, what's what's permitted and conditionally permitted and not allowed in this district? You know, one of the bigger things, drive through facilities and drive in establishments are prohibited except as specifically authorized in two fifteen, which are basically. Banks, you can have a bank drive through, but you can't have other drive throughs. We have dimensional standards, which will be at the end of this, actually at the end of this section. And we'll go over those, and then there's also architectural standards. And the architectural standards only applies. If a project is not in design review district. So if it's in design review district, these don't apply, but these are. And I pretty much think almost everything in these areas is in DRC, but it's just put in there just in case something moves. We are still safe that we have some rules to guide. You know, basic basic requirements of what we would expect, pedestrian access shall be from the public sidewalks. With street facing principal entrances as follows, so just what you would expect out of a downtown building. And then we have some riverfront standards, which actually would be helpful for John to, you know, some of these, what we were trying to do. What we would eventually do in the future, if we had his river river master plan done. Is we would probably try to incorporate some of those principles into these riverfront standards, it would be, it would be a nice way to integrate those. And then that table of dimensions that I mentioned. These are kind of those bulk and massing standards. And every district has a table just like this, so the minimum parcel size is three thousand square feet, so you can't make any parcel smaller than that. Frontage has to be at least thirty feet, if you're gonna create a new parcel, coverage has to be, you can cover it a hundred percent. So you can fully cover a building, a parcel with a building. That includes front setback of zero, side setback of zero, rear setback of zero, the only setback you have is a ten foot minimum. From the water.
Can I ask a question about this?
Yep.
So when these were originally drawn up. What are they, what are they based on, right? Is it just? The way things sort of looked and the way we want them to look, are there engineering reasons that they are set up a particular way, like what's the rationale be behind? Parcel sizes and setbacks and?
Yep, so those are the, those go back to a process that we did. Back when we wrote the regulations in twenty fifteen, probably twenty sixteen, when we were originally working on those. Our consultant at the time went through and. She did a lot of work to put it, put it all together, but did. Evaluations of all the neighborhoods, so we created neighborhoods first. And then found out what are the average setbacks? These are all mostly zero setbacks or.
So it's kind of based on what existed.
It's it's what exists existed at the time and but we also made it ninety percent conforming, so what that means is. You might have. Twenty buildings on a street. And. Fifteen of them are ten feet back. But you might have five of them that are just five feet from the proper, five feet from the front setback, well, we made it five feet. And so therefore there is a lot of room in there for buildings to get bigger and move in those directions because. We made, we were looking at what's. In this case, we would have looked at what is the second, because we're looking at the top ten percent, so if we had twenty, we'd look at. We'd actually literally go through the list, we'd line them all up in numerical order and we go through and say, well, these two. This was five foot and this was six foot, so we should make it. Seven foot, because that's where the next one is. And then we would go through and eventually go through and sit down and say, well. Doesn't make sense to have a seven foot setback, let's make it five and then. Or if we're grouping this street with this street with this street, when we add them all together. You know, this one may have been seven, but this one actually makes it, when we add all these neighborhoods, all these streets together. Going street by street, it averages out to a different number, so.
No, that that's helpful, I just, when we were doing the read through, I I looked at sort of comparative, I looked at Berry, I looked at. You know, whatever, Shelburne and Berlin, I just wanted to see like, is there some standard planning and what you find is that, no. There's a, there's a lot of different things out there, so that answers that question.
Yeah, and what we had previously was a lot of them that were i- in the past. You know, planning commissions and there weren't always professional planning staff that would go through and do a little bit of the the homework. For communities, so communities, a lot of times we go through and say, oh, my God, doesn't that community down the road look great? We'll take that zoning and we'll plug it in here. Well, in in Montpelier, that was, somebody did that, because if you were to look at most of, we had a district that was MDR, we had. High density, medium density and low density res- residential, so we had three residential districts, we now have six or so. But when we had three, if you were to look at the setbacks. Sixty, I think the results were like sixty eight, seventy percent of all the buildings in that district were nonconforming. Because they were very suburban rules and it was like, we have to have a twenty foot setback, well, nobody had a twenty foot setback, all the buildings were already at fifteen feet. So what we did when we did this is all of these got. Went from a twenty foot setback to either a ten or a five. And so just because we looked at what was on the ground, and yes, we could go through and say. Do we want this to change? And if we have areas of towns where we're like, we need to be more transformative, we got to think about this. Whole section going away and being replaced with something else and therefore looking at what's on the ground is not. Valuable or useful. And if that's the case, we should have that conversation, but for the most part, we didn't really have areas of town. Except maybe we're gasoline alley is where Domino's, you know, there are people. Kind of go and say, that could go away and nobody would be crying and be replaced with something nice, but. Outside of that, most peoples, when they see these neighborhoods, go and say, that's a good neighborhood, might need this, might need that, but. The the. The actual bulk and massing kind of look nice. So the rules. Got much better, we've got them all ninety percent, hundred percent compliant now instead of. You know, sixty percent non complying, we're now ninety percent complying.
I wasn't trying to slow you down, I just was really curious about that, so.
No, it's a good, it's a good question, because certainly we, other communities, that is a conversation, people are like, well, I think we should have rules. I I think they're doing a good job over there, we should take their rules and plug them in here. And we're saying, no, we we actually looked at what's on the ground and these rules reflect that, although it's really hard, you're looking at zero setback, zero side. But if you're looking across the street, you have. But if you're looking across the street, you have. What if, you know, what do you have? You've got the Obeshaun Building that. A butts up to the sidewalk, zero setback, it a butts up to the building next to it, zero setback. And a butts up to the one on the other side, zero setback. It's just, this, this is a, what you would expect for that type of neighborhood. And as we move forward, urban center two. This area is just one neighborhood, it's Berry Street, what we call Berry Street West. So it's a a small set of. It's a smaller area that is um. Right next to downtown, so Guy's Farm and Yard, the church. On the way out a little bit, I can't remember, I guess I can look at. Oh, I can't change screens while I'm sharing, so. Stops at Nelson Street, there we go. Alright, so it goes out a little ways. Um, this is. You know, one place that could be. Mixed in with something else, but the, but the rules generally, again, it follows all the same thing. We've got a purpose. A neighborhood character, the uses that are allowed there, the dimensional standards, architectural standards. Um, and again, all of this area is also in design review, so. Um, and riverfront standards. And this one, you'll notice these buildings, there are no block, what we call block-style construction, abutting. Buildings abutting each other. So we have a five-foot setback in these districts, uh, side is five foot. Rear is ten foot and water is twenty foot, so these again reflect what's on the ground. Parcel sizes are bigger on this street, they're about six thousand square feet. Minimum frontage is about sixty feet, coverage can be ninety percent. You've got to have some green space, we're not asking for a lot, but we expect to have some. Floor area ratio, we didn't talk about this on the other one, floor area ratio is just really, it's a different way of looking at density. So we have two density rules, and if we go to the. Two more, you'd end up, uh, you got residential densities that will tell you, you can have. One unit per three thousand square feet of. Parcel. So you have those densities, we've talked about those, and that tells you how many dwelling units you're allowed to have. When we're talking about commercial, what, okay, a commercial isn't a dwelling unit, so how much? Floor area can I have? And the floor area ratio is basically looking at, how big is your parcel? You know, ten thousand square foot parcel, how big, how much commercial can you have? Well, you actually can have. Thirty thousand square feet, because it's a three point O max. So obviously you'd have to go up and have a three or four-story building to maximize your. Uh, commercial. Whether you're talking office, retail, um, anything non-residential. Would all be in that category. So you, you'd have to obviously go up if you've got three point O. To have multi-story to take advantage of it all. But again, these are all really generous. Numbers to try to allow things to happen. Um, we probably don't have a lot of three point O out there. Because there's a number of single-story buildings, but it certainly could accommodate it. Maybe the three point O would come in if we start looking at. The senior center. In the old uh. High school next to it. Where TW Wood and those galleries are, um, those might be in that area of a three point O floor area ratio. And again, um, this has minimum height of twenty-four feet, maximum height of fifty-five feet. So these, these, this could support. Large infill buildings in that part of Berry Street. Urban Center Three looks at the upper. Part of Main Street. Um, again, only one neighborhood, but again, the, 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 the character of. You know, you think about the area from the library up to the roundabout, it's it's distinctly, it's it's got a distinct character. We could combine urban center. Two and urban center three, but that's really distinctly different neighborhood character than Berry Street. Um, where we've got Guys Farm and Yard, single-story, um, Buddies uh is a historic building. But not to the scale of what you have in that other side, so. It's just, we could combine those. But we did them separately because we felt they were distinct enough in character. And again, in this side, you see the parcels are actually nine thousand square feet. And although the numbers seem to be getting up, you're like, wow, up nine thousand, that's that's less than a quarter acre, so it's still really small lots that are allowed, sixty-foot minimum, eighty percent coverage. Um, fifteen-foot setbacks from the front, ten feet from the side, ten feet from the rear. So again, the setbacks are a little bit, the buildings are a bit bigger, but they're also set back a little bit more. Riverfront, and I'll go much quicker through these now. Riverfront is. This is an area where we've recommended as staff that there be a change. You've got Berry Street, the rest of Berry Street. Route two and what we called the crossroads. What I always refer to as gasoline alley. Um, I really think the crossroads needs to be its own zoning district. We just can't go and really, if if we just separated urban center. Two and urban center three, because the buildings are so different, it's really hard to go and say. The gas stations, Domino's Pizza, Cumberland Farms. Are of the same character or similar enough character to Berry Street that they should be lumped together, and that just doesn't make sense. Um, and I think some of the conversation we had at the time was that. The community wanted this area to change, the crossroads neighborhood to change, to be more like those other neighborhoods. I think there's a little question of a reality check in there, if we really expect that to be making any significant change. Um, but that's one we're thinking of, but Berry Street East and Route Two. Do have very similar building. They're mostly residential, mostly multifamily, mostly historic. Um, we do have. Stone Cutter's Way, which tends to be different from that. So do we have Berry Street? Route two and. A separate district for. Stone Cutter's Way out through um. The uh Caledonia Spirits, so, but those are just questions, things we could, right now, they're all lumped in as one, and that's fine. Um, we also could lump some of these into, is it the next one? No, next, next ones are gateways, but there's also a mixed-use residential district, which we might be able to just go through and say. Berry Street's really mixed-use residential, we don't have to make a special grouping for it. It just happened to be in the old zoning. That these areas were riverfront. And we kept that designation, we kept that. Area roughly, and so it's more of a historical. Thing that was kept. Eastern Gateway, just to quickly roll through these, so we've got them all on the table for conversation. Um, is, um, think about. Route three oh two and Route two and a little bit of that Galison Hill area. So that's your eastern gateway, you're talking about um. Car dealerships and tractor supply and uh the, the cabot. And the other areas that are, excuse me, over in Farm and Factory. Um, and again, this is where some things come in, the architectural standards, um, because they're not in design review, these may. Be things to to look at, but. We like to have a certain amount of design in some of these gateway areas to ensure that. The area looks good, but we can talk about those in a little bit more detail when we review them. Parcel sizes are now much bigger, we're talking twenty thousand square feet. And uh. You know, building footprint size and height, now there's a forty thousand square foot max, so you can't. This is to kind of help put a curb on um big-box retailers, so you can have a forty thousand square foot, but. You know, Walmarts and Super Walmarts can be a hundred and twenty, a hundred and eighty, two hundred thousand square foot, I mean, they can be gigantic buildings. Um, if we want to not allow that scale of building, then we've got the footprint cap. Um, Western Gateway, similarly, just on the other side, we're talking about um. The high school. Department of Labor and those buildings out in that direction. Again, some architectural standards, things are starting to shorten up, you can see the architectural standards are fewer. Um, dimensional standards, we still have them. Mixed-use residential, that's the one I had mentioned before, so we've got a couple of these areas that have a mix of uses. The Community College, um. Out on Elm Street, there's Community College and a couple of uh daycares or a daycare, so that was considered a mixed-use. Neighborhood. Court Street is mixed-use. Uh, College Hill. East State Street, so um. Think about East State Street going up, that all used to be medium-density residential, I think, and everybody was non-conforming. So you can have non-conforming structures, which we fixed, you also have non-conforming uses. And by putting these areas into a district that allowed. A mix of uses, so residential and small commercial. Um, meant that the college itself was not a non-conforming use anymore. Uh, there's also one on Lower East State Street, so if you're thinking about. Um, Birch Grove? Bakery, whatever that.
Elm Street.
Elm Street.
Yeah, usually Elm Street.
Yeah, Elm Street. Oh, oh, Lower East State, there is also one as you go through that's also out the meadow, that's on Elm Street, so. So we've got Northfield Street, Redstone, uh, School Street. Lower East State Street, so those are all neighborhoods. We've got a lot of these neighborhoods which had a mix, so rather than. Just allowing this in the meadow. As a conditional use, we went through and said it's allowed in this area and not allowed in this area, so. Then we get to all of our residentials, and these were all really based on looking at that, those, those zoning rules. Uh, residential one point five, which is residential fifteen hundred, so you need to have one unit per fifteen hundred. And if you're trying to do the math in your head, I think that was about. The, the twenty-eight units? Yes. About twenty-eight units. Per acre. So that's about twenty, so that gets you an idea of what that looks like. Um, but. Other than that, residential fifteen hundred has a parcel size of three thousand, so other than that density, it's. Pretty close to a residential three thousand, so this is one of those districts, I think. Gabe was talking about, can we collapse some of these districts? Absolutely residential fifteen hundred can be combined with residential three thousand. They are very, very similar, we can go through and combine those together into one. Because. Most of the, the, the information here in the figure are very, very much the same. The only difference was. The density was one dwelling unit per fifteen hundred instead of one dwelling unit per three thousand. Which now that we allow six units per parcel, kind of washes everything out, you're just. It doesn't really matter. So that's, that's an option. So again, uh, your residential for people, as I'm. Giving everyone motion sickness, your residential fifteen hundred is, there's near Blanchard Park, um. Franklin Street. And Liberty Street have areas that are fifteen hundred. And your three thousands are College Hill. Up near College Hill South. Um, Franklin Street again, Liberty Street, Main Street. River Street. Prospect Street. These are all areas, rather residential three thousand, the Meadow. Heaton Street. Um, Country Club Road. Residential, so we actually have some area zone, Country Club Road for res three thousand. And then the res six thousand, now we're getting into more of your residential neighborhoods. Um, Berlin Street. You know, as you're going up the hill on Berlin Street, that's all res, res six thousand, College Hill. Um, and Redstone. So if you're out that way, those are all residential six thousand. So again, you're, you're really looking at. Seven units an acre. About eighth acre lots. So these are more standard, typical. Owner-occupied house, housing, you're, we allow a lot of other infill to happen. You can put. Two, three, four units in it. The reality is, at this point, most of these are single-family, um, duplexes at most. Your residential nines, you're starting to move out, now we're talking about um. Cliff Street. Crestview, Elm Street. Um, again, all sewer and water, these are Elm Street parts that are on sewer and water. Galison Hill, that has sewer and water, so that's all res nine, Murray Hill. North Street has a section that's um res nine, so these are. Um, Northfield, Stonewall Meadows, Town Street, Toy, Toy Town, College Pasture. Town Hill, so these are all areas that really have much lower density, now we're out to quarter-acre lots. So really, you know, you you have to be thinking about Isabel, Isabel and Hebert and. Up on, yeah, class, the classic would be Town Hill, you know, you drive out Town Hill Road. Um, the lots are much bigger, you have much more lawn. So those are the res nine areas. So the question is, how do you start to combine some of those if we wanted to? The final one is urban residential. Or pretty close to the last one is urban residential. This was designed specially for Country Club Road. And it really was kind of a flexible placeholder that said, we've got approximately seventeen acres of the lower front, Country Club Road, where the actionable master plan. Um, calls for housing in a future community center desires to allow for flexible. Flexibility in how it's designed and laced out, proposed development should promote pedestrian-oriented designs, blah, 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 so. Again, we're thinking with more urban rules, um. And just kind of left things as flexible as we could be, uh, for developers to be able to come in. And I think, oh, rural. And we'll get to James in a second. So, um. Rural. Rural lands is anything that doesn't have sewer and water. So that's what we like to go and say, what, why is this area rural? It's, it's rural because it doesn't have sewer and water. And so we have a number of areas that won't, that don't have it and probably won't, they're very, very low likelihood of extending sewer into these areas.
Oh, I just noticed there's a hand up on the Zoom.
Yeah, that's James, I'm, I'm one district away from being done, so I figured I would just get through the last, but. So we've got a number of these rural districts and then um. They have a two-acre minimum, the reason why they have a two-acre minimum is because you have to have onsite septic. Onsite septic and an, and an onsite well generally require at least uh a separation of. To have separation needs two acres. And then there's a municipal district that we're going to eliminate because we really need to combine it. Um, it just identifies a bunch of municipal parcels separate from the, the neighborhoods they're in, and we really should just lump them in. But, um. I guess we'll go to, to James first. Can he unmute himself?
Can you hear me?
Yes, alright.
Fantastic. Thanks uh for putting this together and having this conversation. Um. I think this art of our zoning regulations pose creates kind of the, some of the biggest opportunity in front of us and also. The biggest current challenge. Um, just to update. The planning commission, as you all know, I was um tangentially involved in trying to move forward. For housing units on Heaton Street. Though, uh, with Downstreet, um. That has been appealed, um, ultimately to the environmental court and possibly beyond that. In that, in part, they're trying to make an argument that it should. Be a major site plan, and I believe that is, uh, the crux of their argument. Is to try and get it into major site plan so that they can access. A bunch of this, a bunch of these rules about character of neighborhood and argue against the project. Secondly, uh, we were working on a. Uh, four-unit coiplex um on Town Hill in res nine thousand. And that administrative zoning approval uh has been appealed to the DRB. And can be appealed from there to the environmental court and can be appealed from there to the Vermont Supreme Court. Both of those could spend years in court. And. Because in part. The city decided not to move forward with the growth center encompassing our Res 9,000 areas. And instead waiting for the tier one A and tier one B. To move forward later next year, hopefully. We can't, we cannot apply. To move any additional projects forward in Montpelier without triggering Act 250. And that is not viable. And we've started looking at, um, doing development in other communities. So I, even though we have other parcels in Montpelier that we very much want to, uh, develop. And I think that. The crux of the challenge is that. While this is the planning commission. And I was hoped that our plan is more forward looking. It, all of these regulations are based on what's on the ground now, looking backwards. And. I think, uh, that creates, and even you get into the, even these architectural standards get down to like, you know, you have to have windows every 20 feet and so on. And so there's just so. Many hooks. For anyone to object to, that they can say something's wrong with it. Which makes it really, really challenging for developers to look at Montpelier and say, yeah, that's a community where I think I've got a path forward to do something. So I would encourage the planning commission. To not look at. Like. All of these neighborhood descriptions, because even in the appeal on Town Hill. That person. Is all about, you know, the character of the neighborhood and what's there. And, you know, they feel like it should be exactly that. And that. Sentiment, although it's not. Supported with the regulations. You know, we didn't have to. Applied, you know, neighborhood standards, uh, with a minor site plan and administrative approval. That sentiment is there in our zoning regulations, telling people that, hey. You know, what's there is what we want there. And if this looks different, or you think this is different, then it shouldn't be there. Um, so I would encourage you to. Uh, throw all of this out for lack of a better. Uh, path forward and start over with like, what do you want? In our community and say, we want mixed use. Residential. And we want buildings to, to be able to be over 35. Feet tall and we want smaller setbacks and we want like some of those density, uh, numbers that Mike listed are really problematic. When you start thinking about the goals that you all put forward. And the vision for our city and developing, you know, if we want to bring on 75 new units a year. That's going to require us to have something different than is on the ground right now. And our zoning regulations are not geared towards that. They're geared towards, we want it to look the same and we want it to be the same density and we want it to, you know, we tweaked, you know, around the edges. And now we're 90% compliant with what's on the ground. I think. Um, if we went to many, many, many fewer. Districts and many, many, many fewer neighborhoods and said. We want. Small businesses. We want, you know, you think mixed use residential, we want coffee shops, we want multifamily housing, we want all of this. In all of the. Parts of town where we have municipal services readily available. And we want to think about. You know, expanding our municipal services to. Serve more. Areas within our community, then I think we're talking about, uh, an exciting forward looking vision. Um, so I think this is a ripe area to make much bigger changes than I think are being contemplated right now by staff. And I appreciate the chance to comment.
Thanks, James.
Zachary, did you want to comment?
Yeah, I have some general comments and I just, I also wanted to build a little bit on what James was just speaking to. I've been, uh, attending planning commission meetings periodically over the last six to 12 months. And I'm very thankful with the progress that you all made on the city plan and, and as well with some of the subsequent, uh, low hanging fruit. Uh, zoning regulation changes that you've made, uh, in the past several months. Um, I'm very pleased that you're continuing to work on zoning regulation because I think it will be fundamental, uh, in the success of. The goals that you've outlined in the city plan, um, just one small part, uh, you know, as, as. Mike really neatly, uh, laid out all of the different zoning districts. You know, I really appreciate the level of detail and description of neighborhood character. And, and this is the part where I want to build on James a little bit. To me. The zoning regulation should be fairly binary, uh, individuals, whether it's a person building a single family home or a large scale developer building downtown. I think in large part, uh, should be able to look to mostly the dimensional standards and the youth standards and have a pretty clear idea of whether or not they are in compliance. I think the neighborhood descriptions and, and, and quality of neighborhood aspects are really. Uh, beautifully articulated, but I think they do give individuals a false sense that. Uh, we're trying to maintain things as they are and not be forward, forward thinking when we look ahead and, and progress as a community. I know tonight you all are mostly interested in, in getting a, an overview of. The various zoning districts. And, and so I just have some general comments about that. You know, as a building professional, I've navigated the zoning process on behalf of clients and also as a local property owner. And in my experience, the level of detail and the number of districts in our regulations are, seem to be out of scale with the needs of our community with, you know, less than 8,000 residents. What may have been intended to provide clarity, I think, has created a maze of technical distinctions that are tedious for applicants. And, uh, to interpret and also laborious for staff to administer. Excessive zoning divisions can unintentionally discourage the very types of projects our town needs most, as James just pointed out. Like infill development and smaller scale, missing middle housing. Options like duplexes and quadplexes. I'm not saying that they can't be done, but I think they are complicated by, um, the zoning regulations as they stand. These are forms of housing that fit well within our existing neighborhoods and can provide more attainable options for local families. But when the code fragments residential districts into too many categories, it limits flexibility. It creates unnecessary variance requests and adds costs and delays that can make these projects financially, financially unfeasible. The complexity of our current system also opens the door to the weaponization of the appeals process. Where technicalities can be used to stall or block otherwise reasonable projects. A simplified quantitative zoning framework would reduce this potential by making requirements clearer. More predictable and less open to subjective interpretation. Importantly, aligning our zoning code. With the goals of the city plan require that we remove barriers to the types of development that plant, that the plan envisions. Consolidation, which is what you guys are talking to some extent about tonight. Uh, will make it easier to deliver the housing variety, neighborhood vitality and smart land use that the city plan calls for. While also, and this is important, I think, broadening our tax base and all of the municipal, municipal services that we're seeking. Consolidating our zoning districts would not only streamline that development process, but also encourage thoughtful growth. That supports housing diversity, efficient land use and a stronger local economy. I think in a town of our size, simplicity will really be an asset moving forward and we should strive for a regulation. Uh, zoning regulation code that is clear and predictable and proportionate to our community scale. Uh, thanks for getting this conversation moving. I'm eager to see, uh, where you all take it next. Thanks for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you both.
Alright, so before I kind of respond to a couple of those, I'll go, I want to go through the next. Which is actually the last piece of our conversation, which is the use table. And the reason why I want to talk about this is. The use table, it has the, the uses on the left and the different districts across the top. And so where something is a P, it's permitted use. And where something is a C, it's a conditional use. And where there's a line, it means it's not allowed. So. You can't do multifamily units more than five units. Um, in the rural lands on, on a single parcel. Um, you can do one to four, and we're probably going to go through and adjust this. Um, we had, we've already have it marked in that. Because we allow up to six. Automatically that this should actually read one to six dwelling units and multifamily. Would be seven to 14. And 15 or more. So we actually have multi-unit split into two different sections and. The reason for that is small multi-unit, um, we have as permitted uses all the way across, except it's not allowed in rural. And, um, mixed unit of 15 or more units. Um, start to kick in as a conditional use in these upper districts. Now, why, what's the difference between the permitted and the conditional use? One is the permitted uses are administrative. Uh, we can issue them, uh, in-house. Uh, if it's in design review, it might have to have a design review, but. Um, it's, it is, uh, an administrative permit. And conditional use. Has a couple of things that go on with it. If you're, if it's a conditional use, it goes to a hearing, which means neighbors get noticed. But really what it is, is, and this is set up in statute, is there, there are only a handful of things that conditional use looks at. You can add more things. We have left it as the minimum, which is. Um, three items of community facilities. Will, will the conditional use have an impact on community facilities? That's almost always no. Um, it's not impacting our schools. It's not impacting our police station. It's not impacting our fire department. To have, uh, another multi-unit. So that's almost always a no. Where it usually comes in is character of the area and, um. Traffic. So. The reason why we chose the number 15 is 15 is where you start to need a traffic study. And so that's why. Um, and even those, if you want to do more than 15 units and you're in riverfront, urban center one, two or three, you don't have to do the traffic study. You don't need the conditional use. That's automatically okay. Um, but as you get to Eastern Gateway, if you want to do a 20 unit building, then we're going to ask you for the, the. Um, traffic study. So for the most part. Residential development, if you're doing anything less than 14 units. Those, those won't need to meet character of the area. And we're also talking. About later on, about removing major, these from major site plan as well, which would also then mean they wouldn't. They wouldn't need, uh, other requirements as well. So. The, the reason we have those descriptions and we could certainly go through and amend those is that.
Can I, can I just throw one more thing out there? Cause you probably address it in the same. In your same comment.
Yep.
Uh, somewhat related. I, I think, you know, as I look at. I follow a bunch of these appeals, you know, and there was a case in South Burlington. Um, I don't know, it's 250 units or something, but you know, like. Uh, so, you know, appealed to the Supreme Court, three years later. I mean, it's, it's totally unfounded, right? So a bunch of the neighbors got together and threw in the legal fees and they, you know, took this developer and who knows how much money it cost. Um, and slowed everything down for like three years, but it, they lost and it's going to be built, but. I feel like. There are some challenges with the, the process of appeals. That are sort of out, like people can make an argument about anything and there's no recourse, right? And so. To me, it's like, even if you stripped everything out, they could still find some reason. They make up a story, whatever it is. Um, and, and they could, you know, try to wear out a developer. Right? We have really awesome people who are trying to build in our community and we want them to build, but they could try to wear down James and Zach and say, well, we're just gonna. Chase this all away. We're going to take it three years. I mean, we had, we had it with the hotel project, right? I mean, it went so far that it's like Hilton says, you know what? It's not worth our time anymore or money. So, I mean, maybe you're going to address that while you're talking about the other things, because I just, I'm not sure that regardless of we add or. To try, I mean, I know that yes, it's some, this can be weaponized, but they can always find, my feeling is they can always find something. And that's more of a state legal.
Yes. Yeah. So that's a state legal issue that, and, and the, the ability to appeal and the ability to just. To throw anything at, at these is. It, the, the neighbors have a lot of power to be able to, to make these arguments. So like I said, there are a number of these appeals. Many of these appeals get discussed and they're appealed on items that are not even applicable. So you'll get appeals and it's like, well, this doesn't meet the character of the area. And you're like, it's not even a requirement. But. It's, there we go. But it'll, that one piece will get chucked out early, but usually they'll appeal over a handful of things and some of them will get thrown out. But our goal is always to be. Writing decisions. Because you know, Meredith has to write them, whether they're an administrative site plan or, uh, something by the DRB. We want to be able to write things that are defensible. And will stand up in court. Um, that means we're doing a good job with our, we aren't, um. You know, they may be complicated, but if anyone has a project, you contact Meredith, she'll help you through it. But they're somewhat necessarily complicated because of the community that we live in. Uh, we just, I was in a meeting. See, this is Monday, so it would have been last week. With Miro Weinberger and, uh, the housing group that is going around the state, his, his housing group. And, you know, um, he was just amazed at the, the number of, uh, kind of the housing appeals and how big of an issue that is for Montpelier. And it just, it just is. It's. One of those things, people hear about it and it's just becomes part of the. Part of the way things are done. It's just, this doesn't happen. In Barry and this doesn't happen in other communities. So they can maybe get away skate through with. Less detailed regulations. Because in Barrytown, they're not going to appeal your application. So it's not going to go to a court and have a judge say, this is being thrown out for. Vagueness. Um, you know, the, the appellant is going to win based on the fact that the regulations are vague, sending it back to the town. Um, and we, our rules, when they go to court generally have always stood up. And, um, we're kind of proud of the fact that. Can we do things to make it better, faster, more efficient? But one thing we don't want to do is get ourselves into a position where. We're actually making it easier for the appellants to win because our rules aren't doing a good enough job. And that's what the character of the area, that's what those neighborhood descriptions are. Maybe we can do better jobs with those neighborhood descriptions. Not saying they're, they're. They're great. We can always look at them, make sure that they do reflect that future vision. But in some cases. They don't, you know, they're, they're not going to be applicable for most of the housing projects. They're mostly going to be coming in as we're talking about certain large congregate living and certain large multifamilies. And as you go through the table, it goes through lodging, commercial. And you'll see as you get into some of these ones here, automobile repair and service isn't allowed in urban center one, two or three. It's a conditional in riverfront. It's permitted in Eastern Gateway. So. These types of, all these lists of potential uses are all here. And so we need to have conditional use because we need to be able to look at. Whether something would have an impact on, on that neighborhood. And that neighborhood is important because the neighborhood. You know, a warehouse in. The. Um, Farm and Family in Eastern Gateway probably is, is probably a permitted use. Uh, yeah, it's a permitted use because it's expected that it would be there. But in Western Gateway, we might want to have a say about how big it is or some of the other, um. Issues, some of the other things we can condition permits on. So that's what the last piece is, and this is the last of this section. We're not going to get into 220, which is the overlay and design review. We'll talk about that on a different week. But this kind of, I wanted to give you just the overview of what's included. And I'll stop sharing right now. Of. Of what's in part two, and it's, it's mostly these zoning districts and those sets of standards. Um, can those standards, and this has happened in almost every update since 2018, we've gone through and, and changed. Um, densities, district lines, um, these, these can be moved and can be combined. And I think there are opportunities out there. I agree with, uh, Zach and James. There are opportunities out there. And we can. Continue to. To refine these, um, and I think. I don't think we should, and it'd be my opinion. Have architectural standards on those smaller. Those smaller projects. I think, um. Gabe had a project that he did that was a three unit that had to go through the major site plan. And he had to go through architectural standards. And I, I think at that time it was. I was surprised to see that that one had to. It seemed like a pretty small project.
That was Steve Slopes though. So it was a little, it was a little different.
Yeah, had some other things with it, but it was, it was still, there was still that, the major site plan still came in and you're like. Do we want to? And that's a question for, for you and for the public and everybody else is, how, how much do we want to get into designing the. Three plaques and the architectural standards? Or do we really want to go through and say? That. There hasn't been an issue that has come up with those from a design standpoint. Some of these rules came out because of design issues. Some of these rules came out because of design issues of other projects. Um, you know, you, you know, you get burned with a, um, a federal building and suddenly you have design review districts. And, uh, and you have, uh, the replacement for city center. Um, it's almost a good building. It just needed certain, if it had a few architectural features, city center would be a beautiful building. But it missed it, didn't have the, the, the caps. And that's what the architects are like. All you gotta do in down here is make sure it fits more than this height. It's got to have a cap on it. It's got to have windows. It's got to have a certain amount of glass. You don't want to have four hundred feet of brick. You want to have windows and, um, have that. Interaction with the pedestrian space. Um, and if you go cities to cities, you can look and find which ones work, which ones don't. That's why we have them. It's not really to pick on. The. Person building the duplex. It really is meant for these other, other opportunities. And we were able to, for Caldonia Spirits, we, we required them to have that larger building. It had to be more than twenty-four feet minimum. So even though they wanted a warehouse, singles, kind of low level. It actually ended up architecturally to make that, they have, they put the peak in and they put the mezzanine. So that way it's got. That larger feel, even though it's still a single-story building, it looks like a multi-story building. So architecturally, it looks better. And that was really the, one of the outputs of. I think it was built under the previous zoning, but it was, still had some of those standards.
For me, there's like still this disconnect of what I'm hearing from the public comment from like James about. Hey, it was like only a couple of units and there was public input. And, you know, it's kind of like the character of the neighborhood was one of the reasons that things are getting derailed. But then there's like an explanation of like, well, you know, if it's less than fifteen units. And that really like maybe shouldn't be part of, of reason to derail the project. And I'm just like. I guess I, I'm hearing like from the public comment that like, hey, character of the neighborhood. All of these very fine detailed regulations are a stumbling block. And then in the meeting, I'm hearing, you know, actually the detailed regulations are, um, helpful. And it's preventing like people to have a solid, um, reason to dispute things. So I feel like I'm just hearing two separate, um, I don't know, like arguments that are arguing opposite things. I don't know how to make sense of that.
Yeah, um, I think it's a good point. I, I, I wanted to say, I think that the, the character. Um, I think when James says his hand up, I think that, that one of the concerns that in the future. Um, that the character of neighborhood could be brought up. That, that, I don't think that was part of the initial appeals process. Um, that, that then goes to the state and then people could potentially in the future point to character of the neighborhood. Um, but I also, I, my bigger point was sort of around like, you know, setting parameters, but also like setting the, the tone. And I wanted to point to Zach's, um, uh, what he said was a sort of a false sense of forward thinking. Like the, the tone of the character of neighborhood, uh, um, paragraphs really is like this is how it is currently. Suggesting this is how it should be in the future too. So there is a culture in Montpelier of sticking to the norm, putting the brakes on. And I'm curious, I, I am personally interested in, in, in helping to change that, that cultural view. Um, I think one of the ways that we can start to do that is through the language of, of the, um, zoning documents. Um, I'm looking, I'm just gonna read this briefly for here in the Meadow. Um, the neighborhood continues to have historic, uh, historic appeal. These regulations are intended to protect the residential scale and character of the neighborhood created by the primarily residential use, historic building stock, front yards. Porches and walkable tree-lined streets. It's like, okay, that, that represents what the Meadow has been for how many decades? Is that our vision for the Meadow in, in the future? And I would argue that it is not our vision. Um, because, uh, we have said fifteen hundred housing units in the next twenty years in, in Montpelier. So I think that every single neighborhood is likely to change. I think then there needs to be a cultural shift. And I think we can help that cultural shift with language in the zoning regulations.
I have a question about, um, like something that you said that. How Montpelier is distinct from Barry and other our neighbors? And I'm wondering if the planning department has statistics. That point in that direction. Do we know how many projects have been appealed? In the past year, um, how many projects have been proposed? And how many of those projects have been appealed?
It's always tough to tell because there's a number that just get. They don't actually end up getting appealed because a neighbor will come across and say, I'm going to appeal your project. And they just come in and drop the project before it actually gets appealed. And we have a couple of those. Um, you know, Sibley Street never actually was appealed. It was dropped before. North College Street was just dropped because of neighbor threatening appeal. Um.
Do you know how many are like actually appealed?
In your time, what are we at? Four? Four-ish. It's a low number. It's not, not a lot, but.
Residential, so?
The hotel, yeah, the hotel.
I think any development.
Um, so parking garage, moving the barn. The access for the solar panels. The, James is best getting appealed to the DRB. Um.
Heat just got appealed.
Heat and Street just got appealed. So those are, but then for new development, you're talking really three. Cause the solar access in the garage or the barn moving or, or different kind of categories. Um. I think those are the.
And Sibley and North College Street.
Those were before me.
Yep.
Well, North College Street didn't get appealed.
Didn't get appealed.
No, they, they, all they, all they came in for was sketch plan review and it got killed at sketch plan because of a threat, threatening to appeal. If they got their permits. So they never even applied for the actual permits.
So what, like percentage?
It's, it's a low, the low percentage, but. It's enough. Um, you know, if you go back in the past, it's just the reputation. Um, Saban's pasture was appealed. Um.
I'd, I'd be curious if it's a low percentage or if it's a low number. My, my sense is that. My sense is that there aren't that many proposed developments. I don't see a lot of construction happening.
So if you're talking new buildings, then yes, if you're talking percentage of all the permits we issued, it's a small percentage. If you're talking percentage of, cause we also, there's lots of things where we just convert, things are getting converted. But for new buildings, new construction, um, or yeah, new buildings, new construction. That are big, then yes.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, I, there haven't been a lot that got approved. I mean, Isabel Circle, it was the subdivision that got approved.
Sure.
The actual permit for the building didn't get.
These, these types of projects, these, these quadruplexes, a, a, a six unit, even, even a single.
Just haven't had them.
Yeah, I think that part of the reason that we don't have them is because of the cultural threat to appeal. It's like, sort of built into the community at this point. I think that Mike is speaking to that. And I do think that the language in our zoning regulations also, also speaks to that. Um, unfortunately.
Yeah, when I told my husband about the latest purchase property of the co-op buying the RK Miles lot. He looked at me and he said, is the only thing that we can build in this town parking lots? And I said, maybe, you know? Cause it happened across, it hap, I brought up the Dunkin' Donuts thing. I know, that's my favorite project. Where we are tearing down functional buildings and putting in a parking lot.
It was, it, it was a, a garage.
I took my car there. It was functioning. It was, it was like, it was like a useful place. Where you could get services and now it is somewhere where you can park to get a latte, I guess.
I would say I would be happy to upzone just about every single zone that we have here in town. Uh, every rez district get bumped up in its death density. Uh, I would be thrilled.
Yeah, I mean, I really want to go through this. My preference would be to go through this chapter, um, or this part. Kind of. Uh, district by district and look at all of these definitions and what we. Can like envision for the city. Um, I think a lot of, looking at these maps, it's too bad we don't have the maps up here.
I can, I can put.
I can share them if you want. I've got the electronic one.
Some aspirational language that you could insert into most of these neighborhoods, right? That just says, and we, moving fut, you know, to the future, we expect to have many small infill multifamily building, you know, whatever. You know, you need an English professor, right? But you know, but it's, it's like, you know, you could put something and just say, look, yes, this does describe what's there. And that's great, but we know it's going to change.
Yeah.
Or you could delete it all too. It sounds like.
Once, the one reason, the one reason you, we have the descriptions in here goes to, again, back, back to the legal justifications for the conditional use. You need to have a certain amount of. Detail to avoid that void for vagueness that comes up in, in courts is. You have to meet the character of the area. And the first thing the court or the DRB or the judge, whatever's gonna say is, what's the character of the area? So that's the reason we have all these different neighborhoods, rather than, we could just have a character of the neighborhood for the entire zoning district. But I think people would go through and say, yeah, but my neighborhood, I live on Cliff Street and my neighborhood's nothing like that other neighborhood. Except for the fact that my parcel sizes are the same size. And so that's, that's why the neighborhoods, there's a little history of why the neighborhoods are there and why we have that description is. So that way we've got something we can point to and say, that's the character. Now, getting to your point. It doesn't necessarily say, the, the character of the neighborhood could be, we expect this to be. You know, four stories and, and zero lot lines. And we expect this to transition over time into this new neighborhood.
Yeah.
Um, and that's, that would be a perfectly fine character of the neighborhood definition as well. Um, the other place that character of the neighborhood comes in, which Meredith would probably point out some point is. It's also in our subdivision regulations, which we're going to talk about getting it out of, because character of the neighborhood for the subdivision doesn't make any sense at all. So we'll talk about getting that out, which is the other place that it shows up. But I, I think we need some of these, but I think the question of rewording. If you want to dive in. You know, and what we would probably focus on is looking at the use table. And if we've got a neighborhood like residential three thousand, and we go through that use table and everything is permitted. Except for one thing, that's really that one thing that's a conditional use. That's when we would go over and say, okay, this one letter C is the only thing that's going to apply to this. So let's make sure this addresses that use, because that's what we're talking about. Because the character of a single-family home is never going to need to meet the character of the area requirement. Or a duplex, or a six-plex, or a fourteen-plex, will never have to meet that requirement because it's a permitted use. And that criteria will never come into effect and therefore we really should. And for the people who want to make things shorter, it really might help us be able to go through and condense some of these to go through and say, we're talking about an awful lot of. What the housing stock looks like in character of the area. But the housing stock will never be a conditional use. So let's, let's really start to take some of these pieces out.
Yeah.
And focus on those things that are important to character of the area, because those are actually conditional uses.
So conditional use comes into play when, um. Or. Uh, sorry, neighborhood characteristics come into play when conditional use is, is the consideration.
Yes.
Yeah.
And currently that's only in two places, conditional uses and subdivisions. And it's already on our acts list too.
In subdivisions.
In subdivisions.
Cause it's, I don't believe, we'll, we'll double check, but it is not a required review in subdivisions.
Yeah.
It's just, it had been, I think it had been in subdivision before twenty eighteen and it got kept in.
And most subdivisions can be regulated by their dimensions. So if you meet the dimensional requirements. Then.
Yeah.
You're, you're okay.
So it can still get appealed. Absolutely. That's a state level thing. But when, when we come back to the zoning regulations, it should go through.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're still having to pay the legal costs.
Of course.
Our, our hope is that we get, work with the legislature to limit, either limit appeals.
For sure.
Or to find a way that they can much more rapidly be able to review and adjudicate these and send them back. So that way it's, it's not a two-year process that when somebody files a frivolous appeal, you can actually go through and say, wait a second here. It, I mean. You know, at the end of the day, the parking garage reached a point where the only thing that could be litigated were the number of trees on the street. Because it was a municipal project, municipal exemptions apply. And because municipal exemptions apply, all these things go away. The only thing that was left were the trees. But that doesn't stop them from continuing the appeal.
Yeah, and costing hundreds of thousands, if not, I think maybe a million dollars and of, of.
We, we put a million dollars into it, but that included design costs and engineering and all the pieces. So.
James's hand has been up.
Oh, yeah. Do you have something more to say, Tim?
Nope.
Okay.
Sorry, there's one other thing I was gonna say. It was, sorry, is that Meredith did have her hand up earlier. I thought enough you got to say what you wanted to.
Mike, Mike got there. So, great. Well, if it's okay, um, let's have James make his comment and then I didn't entertain a motion to adjourn.
Thanks. I just, um, wanted to inject, I think the appeals issue is definitely one. Where the state will weigh in with part of the solution if it is addressed. Um, however, I also would ask that you all consider what the municipality can do. You know, we heard John Copans earlier talk about, wow, you know, a thirty thousand dollar grant. And that was kind of a big deal and so on and so forth. My guess is the Heat and Street Appeal or the Town Hill Appeal. Either of those, if they go through the entire process up to the Vermont Supreme Court. Both of them could easily cost the community ten, twenty thousand dollars in Meredith's time, Mike's time. And hired lawyers. And that's just on taxpayers. That has nothing to do with the expense that the developer would face trying to defend. What is a permitted use? It is a permitted, both of those are permitted projects. And I think that, um, one thing that you all could raise, um, as part of this. Is a proposal or a conversation with city council on frivolous appeals or just appeals period. And say, look, we need the fees to at least cover municipal expenses. And if somebody wants to appeal a housing project. They need to put up the money and put it in escrow. And if they win, by all means, they get all but five hundred dollars of it back. Um. But if they lose, there's, right now, there's no cost to the, um, person who's appealing. All of that cost is borne by taxpayers in Montpelier and borne by whoever's, um, put the proposal forward. And I think you all could, uh, change that conversation, uh, at the local level and not just point to the state. Uh, that's all. A little food for thought before you adjourn. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'm going to adjourn.
Okay, all those favor?
Aye.
Thanks.